Okay, we're all set.
Okay, welcome everybody to the April 26th meeting of the Town of Manlius Planning Board. As we begin all meetings with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Folks, the first item on our agenda is for approval of the minutes of our last meeting conducted on April the 12th.
I'll make a motion approve April 12th minutes.
Motion made by Richard and second by Ann Kelly. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion is carried unanimously. The minutes are approved as written. The next item on our agenda is the application by Brolex Properties. This is for a determination of the site plan for what is known as Freeman Estates. It is a 12 lot building subdivision with 13 total lots located at 7430 Hybridge Road Fayetteville. This is all on one tax map number 101-2-2.1. I do see that we have Tom Wood here on behalf of the developer. If I recall correctly, what we were missing last time is we had written to county and had not yet heard from county. And county has now responded. Jamie, are we missing anything to conduct the vote?
Um, we are, we are not missing anything. I did send a proposed resolution in advance for the board and I just want to confirm that everyone has in fact had the opportunity to read it and comment.
I have.
I have.
I have not.
Yes. The only, the only question, the only question I'd like clarified, and I think we have it, but I want to ask the question. Do, does the applicant have the Route 92 curb cut approved by DOT?
We have, believe I'm on, we have tentative approval. I don't have the formal approval. All the applications have been submitted with COVID. I don't know how they're, what their turnaround time is. They told me that, that they didn't see any or envision any problems. So we could make a contingent on that. I have no problem with that.
And I've spoken with Ed Reed, the engineer, and he indicates the same, Rich.
Okay.
There doesn't appear to be any issue. It's the same driveway.
Yeah, I, I can't imagine it being a problem, but so I, I guess, Joe, are we ready for a motion?
I have a couple, I have a couple of questions.
Valerie, go ahead and ask.
Um, yeah, I just wondered on, since we got the, first of all, since we got the information back from the Onadoga County Planning Board. I just wondered if, if the applicant has, has done either or both of the advisory notes that they offered as far as contacting the Onadoga County Water Authorities Engineering Department. And to evaluate like hydrant, you know, hydrant flow test information and backflow prevention. And then the other one that seemed even more important was that the project, they say, is located in an area designated as flow constrained or impacted by excessive wet weather flow or is attributable to a combined sewer overflow. So they're asking, advising the applicant to contact the Onadoga County Water Department of Water, Water Environment Protection to determine the sewer availability and capacity. So I just wondered if, if the applicants can speak to those two things.
Since I've had conversation with Steve Drake, the engineer at the Water Authority, and he does not see any problem with, as far as the potable water, as far as capacity, pressure, et cetera. That, that is not an issue. As far as the issues with WEP, there is a trunk sewer that runs along Limestone Creek. I don't know if the board's familiar with it. Basically, all the affluent from the village of Manlius used to have its own sewage treatment facility. The name it, there is a trunk sewer that runs right along Limestone Creek. It follows basically the grade of Limestone Creek and it runs all the way to the Limestone Meadow Brook sewage treatment facility. So I think that what their concerns are, they're, they're talking about that trunk sewer, which is quite a bit lower than what's on our property. It's probably 25 feet, just the surface area, and then the depth of the sewer itself. So it's quite a bit below that. I know inundation, stormwater inundation on that, and all sanitary sewers throughout the east side. Although I think a lot of it comes from closer to the city, but plugging leaks in the older parts of the sewer has been an ongoing concern for WEP. The new stuff that we put in, the new treatment or the new gravity sewer system will be all pressure trusted. Doug knows the drill on that. I mean, there are no leaks in the new sewers that go in. Those are guaranteed to be up to some, it's the older sewers that need the attention, particularly in the villages, the village of Man. What happens when we get a lot of rain, it gets into the sanitary system and that shouldn't be happening. So we're, we're basically treating rainwater and it just inundates the whole system. But we're working with WEP on that. There is all sorts of political stuff, consent orders or whatever. So we will deal with them on the permission and what needs to be done if, if there's any mitigation, off-site mitigation. Doug probably knows more than I do on that.
Valerie, up until last year, the town was lead agency on an offset plan. We would have required Tom to provide an offset plan. To your point, the offset plan is still required. The town has turned over on a 40-year lease operation of the sewer system. So to your point, I would probably make it contingent upon the building permit that we would need to have an offset plan by the applicant because we wouldn't, we wouldn't be able to build without WEP's approval for the connection to the sewer with, I believe, it's either a two to one or is it a one to one offset?
That's two to one.
Two to one, yeah. You know, other, other areas we work in, there's a five to one offset. So this is pretty convenient. And I don't know, I don't know what WEP is doing for their two to one offsets, but we should make that a contingency before a building permit could be pulled for this.
Doug, it really is, it's like an automatic contingency because WEP and Health Department's going to have to sign the subdivision map before it can be filed. And they won't file it, or signed off on it until WEP gives the blessing. So it's, it's catch 22. So I need to.
Okay, all right. I know we have like a big concern with some other projects, so I just wanted to.
No, it's plug the leaks, that's it. But I think I guess, working on it.
I guess what I'm hearing is the sole contingency is the curb cut.
Yeah.
Yes. That was with the county. Go ahead, Tom, I'm sorry.
Well, I mean, obviously we can't fill the road without the curb cut and we can't activate our sewers without the, with the blessing of them. So it's kind of all built into the system regardless of what the town does. These other jurisdictions have their say in it.
No, I, I don't disagree, Tom. I think you're right on the, the sewer with the two to one offset. You won't get them to sign off the board. They won't sign off without it. But we're looking at a plan that has a curb cut in a location that we don't know has been approved. So I think, you know, I, I would be willing to make a motion to approve the subdivision contingent on the curb cut being approved by the DOT.
We're fine with that. We are, that's fine.
Well, the Onadoga County Planning Board Resolution at the end says, "The applicant must continue to coordinate Hybridge Road access plans with the New York State Department of Transportation to ensure all permitting requirements are met. Municipality must ensure any mitigation may be determined by the department. It's reflected on the project plans prior to or as a condition of, of the multiple municipal approval."
And again, we're not asking for final.
We can adopt that. We can adopt that in the resolution.
I think it's in there, right?
It, it is. It's in the proposed resolution.
And I wanted to ask, Tom, though, we, we've got some conditions. We, we did up a resolution and I'm hoping you received a copy of that, Tom.
Yes, I have. And Jamie and I spoke about it literally this afternoon. We're fine with everything that she put together. We put together together.
This includes adding into the restrictive covenants, the declaration and covenants, the perpetual enforcement of that right away. And if the homeowners association fails, the individual owners would take up that responsibility. We're going to be adding on the map, the final map, it's going to be added on that those 17 acres are forever wild. And you're, you're okay with all these terms?
Okay, yeah. And the only thing Jamie and I discussed, we may, I don't know if we need to change anything, but you know, if they want to plant trees, we don't want to discourage that.
I, I can certainly add that. We have the restrictions in the, the forever wild that you can't do anything except they, they can put in walking trails. And that was something that was brought up at the last meeting, although they're not open to the public. Maybe at some point there would be a discussion about that, but at this point it would not be open to the public on private land. And we would not have the power to do that or to make that happen at this board level. So I can certainly add in that section 404 Forever Wild, do not disturb and add in, except that additional trees may be planted. And I will put that in there and will be, I'll be reviewing the final set of covenants when all of these things are in there and Tom will send them to me. I'll make sure they're all in there. And, and so that this resolution is contingent upon me doing that as well, to make sure that everything is incorporated.
And I have a couple of questions on the covenant too. Would this be the time to ask those?
Sure.
Okay. And again, for the applicant, I just, I, I have read through the entire covenant document. So, and I just, there's this, there's some spots in there just for, for you guys to know that refer to them as patio homes. Um, and then I know that's like just editing, but just so you know. And then the other thing I just wanted to, like, just reading through it, I just wanted to make sure that I'm clear so that we kind of know too, as far as the town. When, when will the HOA have access to the reserve fund and control of it to take, to maintain the stormwater facilities? Cause I'm, I'm not sure if it's like eight of the 12 homes or all of the homes. There's like a little miss, it's, it's different in some of the sections.
Good point. And I, we can do, I mean, normally the developer is responsible for completing the stormwater management features pursuant to the plan. So we have to, we have to build it, so to speak. And then the maintenance kicks in as far as when, when the and that is something that we can put in there and I don't know what it should be. I mean, I have no problem with a majority or eight or some number. I don't hate to leave it for all of 12 because you could end up with one straggler lot, so to speak. You know, that just sits there for whatever reason and it just doesn't get built upon. You know, I've seen that happen before, so I don't want to put a burden on, on it, so to speak. I would say a majority. Jamie, what's your thought on that?
That seems appropriate.
Okay. So somewhere around eight or whatever.
I think sooner rather than later, so that they start to have control over it.
True, true, yeah. But again, I don't want to burden them either because, you know.
Want it to be built.
You know, we have more sediment during construction. We have more cleanup, more clean out, you know, removing excess sediment. So I guess I would, Jamie and I can talk about it, but I would think the number of majority or eight, eight units would solve something like that.
I, just my two cents on this, I would be careful on putting a number in there only because, Tom, we've talked in the past about where somebody may come in and say, I want a larger house and take up two lots. So now we're to 11 or 10 or nine or whatever. So I would just caution to be careful about what you put in there.
Yeah, that's a good point.
You can just put in eight units or majority, whichever comes sooner.
Okay. And, and Jamie, Jamie and I will review those before I present a map for signing. We'll have a final set of covenants for you all to review.
Yes, I'll make sure that it gets to everyone. I won't be the final say.
Very good.
That would be great. Thank you. Okay, the one thing that I have left is Fred, you had indicated you did not get an opportunity to review the resolution.
No, I, I spent a lot of time, as Valerie did, reading the, the covenants, but I didn't, I didn't read the resolution.
So the resolution is basically for approval of the 12 building lots and a 13 lot subdivision. But we added on all those covenants that we wanted to add in there and restrictions and forever wild. Everything we talked about at the last meeting has been incorporated into the resolution.
Good.
So in light of this, I would entertain a motion. I've already made it, but I just want to say, Jamie, Jamie did a good job. Jamie, I made a motion to approve the subdivision and the resolution and the what?
As presented.
As presented.
With the.
And Jamie did a good job pulling this all together.
Oh, excellent. With the additional conditions that we, that we put up tonight, that there will be the covenant that there will be a turnover of
ownership.
To the homeowners and the homeowners association upon eight units or majority, whichever is sooner. Before a building is permitted, pulled, a WEP must sign off and.
The curb cut.
I believe that that's already in there on the resolution about they have to cooperate with the, whatever the.
Right. Isn't there? It isn't.
And that there's no prohibition of planting of additional trees or shrubs in the forever wild here.
Yep, yep, yep. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Michael Roy seconded first. So we have a motion made by Richard and second by Michael Roy. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? The motion is unanimously approved.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Good luck. Very good, folks. Have a good evening. We'll see you then.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The second item on our agenda is an application by Jared Enterprises. Excuse me, it's KJET Enterprises for a building permit extension. This is for 8428 Bragley Road, Manlius, tax map number 99-2-30. It's my understanding that this is the third application for an extension of the building permit. Mr. Holland, are you joining us?
Yes, sir. Um, this is the second. We did a extension last year. This is the second. We were, we're building the, the project out of pocket and we ran into some cost overruns due to the site conditions. Some unknowns that we weren't expecting. We've secured the funding and financing to complete the project. We are expected to close within the next couple of weeks and hopefully the next two weeks. I'm just waiting on the exact date at this time.
Mr. Holland, just so you know, someone took photographs and the photographs have been circulated to the members of our board relative to some of the condition on the property. I've got to tell you, having visited the property, I think the photographs only show a portion of the difficulties on that property. And the piles of fill that are piled there, there's got to be about 20 piles of fill. Those are depicted in the photographs. But missing from the photographs are two large storage trailers. And there are tons of junk, pipes, buckets, coolers, patio sets upside down, fencing, all kinds of various trash. And be very candid, visiting the property and looking at the adjoining neighborhood. I think the adjoining neighbors have to be embarrassed of their own homes with the condition of that lot. I'm very concerned about the condition of that lot. Can you address that?
Um, the, the storage containers are for materials, for the building materials. The other stuff is that's outside. Yes, we can get that, that taken care of and cleaned up. That's, that's not a problem whatsoever. Some of it is some material like the pipes and most of the material that you're referring to. I believe there, yes, there's a couple of coolers that are sitting there. All, all that can get cleaned up, but most of it is all building material.
You should also know two other things. There have been anonymous complaints. I've received a complaint over the weekend in detail. And, and I'm kind of shocked my visit out there confirmed exactly what I had been told. And the second thing is our town code officer did visit the premises and our town code officer is of the opinion that an extension of the building permit should not be granted until the cleanup is conducted. The cleanup is something that can be conducted immediately. But my fear is if, if we give the permit now, that condition may continue to exist. And the neighbors have gorgeous, beautiful yards and beautiful premises. And your lot is so totally different from theirs. They've got to be very perturbed.
Okay, when, when you said, because you were referring to the piles of, of fill, there are, there were loads of fill delivered that, yes, need to be spread. But when you refer to the cleanup of any material or whatnot, yes, we can, we can get that cleaned up. That's, that's not a problem whatsoever.
Could you, could you explain, was this controlled fill? Where did it come from?
Yes, it's, it is fill from other projects to, that is needed for the site conditions for grading.
From the pictures that I've seen in the drive-by, I saw that is anything but controlled. Let, let me ask a basic question, if I could. Bear with me. The owner of the property is Wendy Holland, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And could you confirm with me if that's her signature on the owner's signature on the application?
Uh, yes, sir. She's my, that's, that's my wife.
Could you confirm that, that that is her signature on the first page of the application?
I don't have the application in front of me either. She, she, if it's her signature, she signed it. If it's her name, yes, sir.
What's your first name?
Kenneth.
That's your signature?
Okay.
So I, I don't even know if this is a valid application. I'll leave that up to people that are smarter than me. Does anyone else want to express some thoughts or feelings about this?
Yeah, it's Mike Lee Roy. You know, I, I had my wife drive me by there too. And, you know, if you needed to know, if you had to get this stuff cleaned up, why didn't you do it sooner than now? I mean, what's taken so long to get it cleaned up?
Who, when you say cleaned up, sir, I mean, what are you referring to the, the material that's in the, the back, back portion of the property?
Just the general condition of the property itself, yes.
Um, we were, like, like I said previously, we, we've been building out of pocket. And, you know, due to the site conditions, some of the unknown site conditions, we ran a little over and we were trying to secure funding to, to complete.
Well, what, what would be the timeline now to get it completed?
We're looking at six to max nine months.
Jamie, I, I hate to be a stickler. I, these are the kind of things that I look at. But this application is not signed by the owner, even though it says owner's signature on the first page. Is this something we should even be entertaining?
Well, I think it's, I think that we can, depending on what this board decides to do, we can correct that administratively. And, you know, sometimes people, you know, that's his wife and he considers himself the same. And I, I wouldn't worry about that. It would need to be corrected. It can be a condition. If this board is so inclined, the building permit can be extended by this board, but will not, will not be granted or given to continue construction until administratively, our codes officer goes out and approves the cleanup. And we can certainly do that rather than having them come back in a couple of weeks or it might take them a couple of weeks to clean up anyway. That's up to this board. But, but Rich, I do think we can, we can do any of those things, including.
All right. I, I'm usually, you know how I am. I'm a little fastidious or something, this kind of thing. I like everything to be tied down.
And, and we have no problem. We, we want to make this. This is a great neighborhood. We want this, it'll be beautiful when it's done. And if, if you would, if you would like to put together a list of exactly what you're, what you saw that you would like rectified. By all means, we will, we will do whatever it takes and we'll get that completed. We, we want to get this completed. And we'd get this project done in a timely manner.
I'll be honest, Ken, that is something that the codes officer typically does. It's not for the planning board. And he has recommended that we don't extend it. It is my belief we shouldn't until the code officers comes back and says it's okay to extend it. Or we've issued a new building permit or whatever the case may be. So I'm of the belief that is not our position to tell you what you need to do. That's between you and the codes officer.
Okay, can you, can you give me the name of the codes officer? I mean, I've, I've spoken with Randy, but can you give me the codes officer name?
He is our Director of Codes Enforcement.
So it's call, call Randy and discuss it with him?
You better do it quickly.
I, I will call him tomorrow.
Ken, you might look at it as though you were one of your neighbors and think, how would you like to have somebody building on your lot that looks like the mess you've left? And I think that would tell you what needs to be done.
So, Joe, if I'm not too early, I'd like to make a motion to deny the application to extend the permit.
I would second that.
Might I, might I suggest that we simply keep it open?
I, I thought of that as a possibility that we, we could adjourn the matter without calendaring it until a future date. And when Mr. Holland can work things out with our code officer and the code officer feels that it's been significantly cleaned up. Then the code officer could ask to put it back on our calendar. But I've got a motion that's made in second already. And therefore, we should vote on that unless somebody is moving to amend that.
Well, Joe, just Mike Lee Roy. Maybe we should give this guy a chance to get it cleaned up. I mean, I still don't understand why it is in the condition that it is, but that's his business. So maybe an extension before we vote on it might be a good idea.
Would agree with that.
Would our, and Richard be okay with withdrawing your motion then? And. Before I do that, let me ask a question. Ken, how long ago did you start bringing Phil into that lot?
Um, we had Phil brought in, well, the piles of fill that are along the driveway entrance. That was brought in right before the winter in the snow. So we didn't have time to spread that, that material. And so that's why all of our equipment's been out on job sites. So we got to pull some equipment in to get that spread and distributed. So that's why the piles of filler there and the other piles that are spread out for grading in. And if you're referring to, if that's the debris that you are referring to, because there's some piles of concrete and whatnot. Cause there's some piles of concrete and whatnot that is some, in some of the fill that was brought in.
Yep.
Um, is, is, is that some of the, the complaints? Is that what you're referring to?
Oh, that's some of it. But you've got all kinds of miscellaneous pipes and fences and patio sets upside down and, and coolers and buckets and. This is all kinds of miscellaneous things that clearly have very little, if any, value. I'd call them junk. Yeah, I, I, Joe, I. I apologize, but I am not willing to amend my motion. Alright, in, in light of that, we have a motion made in second and we will be required to put a vote on it?
I have a question before we vote, Mr. Chairman. Parliamentary wise, uh, he, he is not prohibited from asking for an extension again, is he? Even if we deny it this time?
It would have to be, it would have to be a new permit, I think, Fred. He could ask again at any time.
And I just wanted to say too, I just feel like we're, we just presented this to the applicant and he's not argumentative about it. He's, seems like he wants to cooperate, so. Um, is it a smoother process if we leave it open and let him remedy it with the codes officer and give him a chance to do that?
I'm sorry, Joe. If the extension is denied, he has to start out with, he has to go for a brand new building permit. If, if we, if this board extends this and, and holds it open. We correct the administrative thing, maybe in a couple of weeks or more. Um, he would not, his building permit wouldn't run out.
This is the first we've let the applicant know there's an issue, correct?
Yeah, so I, I've actually spoke with Randy and he never has mentioned anything to us about anything. Cause we would have, we would have taken care of it immediately. If he were, anybody would have brought anything to our touch, we would have taken care of it. Um, and, and I do apologize. We do like to keep a clean job site. So I, I understand some of the concerns that you guys have presented. And we will, uh, we will get right on top of it to rectify, rectify everything. And we just, we, we want to get this uh, this project completed. It's like, like I previously stated, it's a great neighborhood. Beautiful neighborhood and we, we want to add value to this, this street and the town and not, we don't want it to look like no offensive trailer park.
And this is Mike Leroy again. Having listened to what you just said, how long would it take you to clean this up?
Um, I gotta, I have to bring, for, for the piles in the, the front, I just gotta get some equipment, uh, but everything else. Um, I mean, less than a week for everything else. The, the piles in the front, let me get, uh, let me get one of my equipments. So I'm saying less than two weeks, we can have everything cleaned up.
So you're, you're saying you can rectify this problem in less than two weeks?
Yes, sir.
Well, if that's the case, I'll resend my second to Rich's motion and uh see if we can't go ahead with the extension the way it is.
I, I'd like to ask another question. If it, if it would only take two weeks to rectify this, other than maybe two days over the last month. That we had snow on the ground. Why wasn't this rectified a month ago?
Uh, we've, we've gotten, like, like I previously stated about the funding, uh, we were waiting on the funding. It's a complete and we've been out of town on other work. So we haven't been, been on site working.
Earlier in this discussion, you said you're waiting on a closing. I'm assuming it's a construction loan, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And what happens if the construction loan does not close in the timeframe that you think it's going to?
Um, well, we'll still, no matter what, this will get cleaned up. Um, but. I've got so much money invested in this, it, it, it has, it will be completed by the year or so. It has to.
Okay, and Mr. Holland, our intent is not to give you a hard time. But it is to, to uh make sure that that neighborhood is secure, the neighborhood looks appropriately. And if we have to use holding up the uh, the permit as a wedge to, to make sure that it's significantly improved. That's kind of what we're doing.
I completely understand that. I, that's fully understandable.
Okay, so we have a motion made, but not second. Did anyone else want to care to second it or is the motion gonna fall?
I'd like to hear a guarantee that this could be done in two weeks.
I will guarantee, I will guarantee from what we've discussed the, um, this evening. That from what I hear, I will get with Randy tomorrow and get a list from him. So I, we can make sure that we fit every item that he, that's on his topic. Um, but I think after speaking with you all this evening, we, we know what you're looking for, um, and what needs to be done. So yes, sir, I will guarantee it can be completed.
Can we have the guarantee in writing?
Yes, I, I, when, when I get to, I will have Randy, um, send me his items. And I will sign off, um, uh, to that in, in response to him with our, um. Commitment that it will be completed. Yes, sir.
We, the, the pro- the problem I have with that and the reason that I'm in favor of not extending this. Is there is no recourse to the town if we extend this. A month from now, two months from now, three months from now, that, that could still look the exact same way and there's nothing we can do.
Can you put a?
Excuse me, I would recommend that it be put on the agenda for the next meeting for action. And that way, if it, if it is not satisfactorily addressed, then you can deny it.
Could it just be tabled until the next meeting? It can be. Do we have a motion to table?
I'll table it.
I would support that, yes.
Motion by Ann, second by Michael Roy to simply table this application. Uh, all in favor?
The, the condition is that this is done by the next meeting.
Well, it's gonna be untabled as of the next meeting, Mike. If, if we, if everybody's voted in favor. Has anybody voted against that, tabling it?
Rich.
Rich. The motion carries, this is tabled. The building permit extension has not been granted. The matter is tabled for two weeks and Mr. Holland, it's in your hands as to where we are two weeks from now.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is the application by Route Five Development Corporation. And this is an initial presentation relative to a site plan at five forty Town Drive Fayetteville. This is on lot fifteen, uh, and it's a proposed restaurant building. Uh, tax app number eighty-seven dash one dash fifteen point two. And who do we have on behalf of the applicant?
Uh, we have Kate Johnson from Core. And good evening, everybody. It is nice to see you all, even though it's virtual. Um, I'm happy that you're all safe and healthy and still doing your planning board activities. I do have with me tonight Andrew Hart, um, who is with Bergman. He's our engineer. Uh, Bergman Associates out of Rochester. I also have Amy Dake. Uh, she is with SRF. And is a traffic engineer. I'm sitting with Carly Hanson because we were told we could only have so many connections. So we're, we're in the same office, um, joining tonight, so. Um, do you want me to get started?
I would like you to give us an idea of what you'd like to do and what you're trying to do and how.
Okie doke. Um, Andy, do you want to put up just a, I, I'm not gonna say much. These guys have all the details. But as you all know, this is Zoned Regional Shopping Center. Um, this property is a one point five eight acre site. It is currently paved and is really a parking lot and it's located between McDonald's and Key Bank on Route Five. So it's all there paved, sitting there if you drive by it right now. It was previously owned by Tops and it was that some sort of excess parking that they never used. Um, so what we're proposing is to put, um. The building's approximately seventy-five hundred square feet and we, we would like it to be for two restaurant tenants. Both are considered fast casual. Um, I will tell you, it's not a Chick-fil-A. And I will tell you that I cannot tell you what the tenants are yet. We have not, um, been able to release that. But as soon as we can, we will let you know. Um, but one restaurant, the larger one, um, has a traditional. Drive-through and the other one, the smaller one, has what we call a mobile pickup. And as you know, drive-throughs are sort of the rage and, and, um. Because of COVID and the need to be able to provide, um, takeout food. Um, it's called a mobile pickup and what you do is you order online, you schedule a time, they tell you what time your pickup is. And when that time arrives, you go to the drive-up pickup window and pick up your food. So the, for the, the mobile pickup, there is no order window where you'd have, you know, to stop and order your food. It's really just drive up, pick up the food and leave. But then there is, uh, again, for the larger restaurant, there is a traditional drive-through. Um, so yeah, Andy, Andy's using his little pointer there, but, um, I'm gonna have him go through the site plan, um, in much more detail with you. And then we're, we'll go over traffic and then we can walk through the building elevations if that, if that's okay with everybody.
Um, could I, could I ask a question just? For part of the approval process, I was not on the planning board, so I don't know the answer to this, but I thought I would ask. Since it was paved and it was set up for parking. Was there any agreement when Tops or McDonald's or the bank or anybody went in? Was this to be banked parking?
No, it was not. It was excess parking. So when we did the subdivision with Tops, they had counted and calculated there was enough parking. For Tops and it was never part of, um, McDonald's or the Key Bank parking.
That was addressed during the subdivision, Rich.
Yeah.
Okay, probably two years ago.
At least two years ago.
Yeah.
I, I apologize, I wasn't on the.
No, it's a really good question. You should have been on the planning board back then.
I had my share.
I know, I know you did your duty. Um, alright, so we will, um.
Send one question too, I'm sorry to interrupt. I'm, I'm new to the planning board as well, so. Um, but I was just looking, I reviewed the documents that you guys sent in and so this picture that you're showing. Just so I'm better understanding, looks different from what was submitted. Has there been a change?
Yes.
Okay, so you, I'll, I'll just, won't look at.
Yes. We, we did make some changes, um, since we submitted largely to the access points. And maybe a little bit of, uh, tweaking due to tenant concern. So we, we tried to accommodate the tenants' concerns. They know how they operate, et cetera. But, um, this is what we'd like to present to you tonight and, um. Andy, I'll let him walk through that.
Thank you.
Okay.
This, this Mike Leroy, I have a question. You made an interesting statement saying this is not a Chick-fil-A. I, I have visited many Chick-fil-A's and this is set up like a Chick-fil-A is set up. If it's not a Chick-fil-A and you can't dispose it, I mean, what type of restaurant are we talking about here? And, and I have another question too that has to do with traffic patterns, but you might be gonna address that, so.
Well, we'd like to go over traffic and, you know, um, what kind of restaurants? One is, um, Mexican and one is sandwiches, coffee. Salads.
Okay, well, I'll let you go with your presentation, but.
Okay, thank you. You're up, Andy.
Great, thank you. Can everybody hear me hopefully? Okay, my name's Andy Hart, uh, landscape architect with Bergman. And, uh, just to clarify a little bit more about the building, the building's seven thousand two hundred and forty square feet, one story. Uh, it'll house the two restaurants, as Kate mentioned. Restaurant A on the left of the building, as it sits here, will be two thousand four hundred and ten square feet. And Restaurant B on the right will be forty-five hundred square feet. And there will be a small three hundred and thirty square foot mechanical room that'll be shared by both tenants. So utilities will come into that mechanical room. Uh, the property, as Kate mentioned, sits between, um, McDonald's and Key Bank. Uh, the building is situated sixty-two point five feet from the right of way to the face of the building. And in relation to the other two buildings, McDonald's sits sixty-two point five feet away. And Key Bank is eighty-nine point three feet, or eighty-nine foot three inches, sorry. And, um, also the Chase Bank, which was just built, sits fifty feet from the right away. So just to give you a relation with all the other buildings. Um, as Kate mentioned, we do have Restaurant A will have the mobile order pickup window. Um, so they won't, they'll, they'll order off on an, an app somewhere in their computer or phone. Drive to the site to pick up their food. We've provided seven car stack for that, so the pickup would be here at the window. And then there's room for seven cars to stack behind there. So it's a pretty good sized stack for this restaurant. They don't require that many, but just the way the layout works, we provided as many as we could. For the second restaurant, Restaurant B, their typical drive-through, you, uh, would pick up here. There is an order board that'll be on the south face of the building, a pre-order board and a regular order board, just like you'd have at every other drive-through. And this drives you, just because of the length we have available, we can stack sixteen cars. We're not saying that they're gonna need sixteen stacks, but just the way the layout is, it allows for that. So that kind of, this building's kind of unique in that we have two drive-up type windows, which you don't normally have in the same building. Uh, vehicle access to the site, we have two, two spots to access the site. One from the west side of the site, west corner, and one from the east corner, and they're both two-way, um, enter and exits. So they're both two-way traffic. Uh, there will be tractor-trailer access to deliver goods to the, both the restaurants. So the tractor-trailer would enter in from the McDonald's entrance over off of, uh, Genesee Street that. At the light would come in around McDonald's, turn right onto the ring road and they would come in here. So the truck would come in, into the site, they would come through the drive-through lanes. There's a dedicated space in the back of the building for them to pull off against the, uh, the curb on the south side. They can unload their goods for both stores, which the loading doors are here. And then they can drive out and back out to the left and go back to the same signal line. So we do have access for tractor-trailer. It's a WB sixty-two, that's the size that we've designed to.
It, I, I'm sorry, is your name Andy?
It is.
Okay, the plans that I saw and looked at had a one-way entrance at the west entrance of the site. And now I see it's a, a full service?
Correct.
Yeah, what was the reason for changing that?
Uh, the tenants would prefer to have a, an access point exiting out this way, so they wanted us to adjust that a little bit, so we did. And really, the only adjustment was signage and, and striping, uh, the driveway configuration stayed the same.
And how do the trucks, the tractor-trailers you're talking about? How do they get in for delivery when there are cars in the drive-through lanes?
Yeah, the idea is that the delivery would be off-hours so that they wouldn't be interfering with the traffic of the store while it's open to, to.
I, I'll be honest, I'll be honest, I've never seen that before. Now, that doesn't mean it doesn't happen, but I'm over at Panera's three or four days a week. And they have a truck that's there while the store is open. And they're opening at seven o'clock now instead of six o'clock. If they opened at six, that truck would be making deliveries while the store is open. And my guess is that, in the way I'm looking at this, that could be a problem.
It could be a problem if you have a full stack, but even if you only had three or four cars here. The truck could still enter without a problem, just have to wait to exit if the vehicles were still there to try to get out. But, um, the, both tenants are aware of this configuration. They've both looked at it and we're in the process of, uh, getting their approval for it, so. They'll be, they'll be, uh, now, they'll have acknowledgement that there could be some conflict with drive-through traffic.
Have you talked to the fire department? Have you talked to the fire department about this layout and getting trucks on the backside of that building?
I have not personally known that yet.
Okay, is that something you plan on doing?
We can do that, yes, absolutely.
It, Rich, this Mike Lee, right. I I live right around the corner from this, so I I really have some questions about traffic flow altogether. I mean, I I know what goes on in that parking lot a lot and and I don't know how the stacking, you know, I I have the same concern, how are you gonna get? Well, I have a problem with the stacking, okay, but I also have a problem with how you get in and out of. How do you get to this restaurant and how do you get out of it?
You get in, you can get in and out from both of these driveways here and here. This, you can pull in here, turn left and head into the parking lot and park. You could you could mobile order your food, not even go in the store, wait for your time and then exit out and get into that lane and pick up your mobile food. Or you could come in the other entrance and do the same thing, park and then walk right into this restaurant. Their door is here. Eat your food, eat your lunch, whatever, dinner, and then go back out and then you can exit out the same way you came in. Or you can exit out here. So the idea is to have two full driveways that are both egress and ingress.
So you're exiting out to where?
The Ring Road, there's a Ring Road, so. The Ring Road right here.
I agree. I I know the Ring Road very well, so.
Okay.
Has anyone done a codes analysis as to parking? For this size structure?
Yes, we're within the required parking per town code. We're at forty-eight spots.
It's based on the number of seats.
Correct.
It was fifty-eight seats were anticipated for Restaurant A and Restaurant B is about a hundred and twenty seats, I believe. And the parking regulations are are so many per number of seats. And we're we meet that requirement.
One for every five seats.
Right.
So Restaurant A is fifty-eight seats, Restaurant B is a hundred and fifty seats. And we're at forty-eight, so we're six above the town code.
Okay, so I guess I I guess part of the site plan review would be to actually have that on the plan, so that that if things change in the future, we could go back to the applicant and say, things need to change.
Here, we can put that on the site plan.
Yeah, the site plan indicates the parking to have that.
Yeah, and the number and the number of seats, more importantly, if that's what drives it, so that we know if it if the number of seats change, then something on the site plan needs to change. I I'll be honest, I I have never seen anything like this before with the the double drive-throughs. I I this is something new to me.
It may not be new much longer. It may be the new norm, as they say.
Is there anything like this anywhere in central New York right now?
I believe McDonald's is a double drive-through.
McDonald's is a double drive-through. I'll tell you what, it's it's a very congested area.
McDonald's is not a double drive-through. McDonald's is a double order area.
Right, but.
Which then goes to one drive-through. This is two separate drive-throughs.
And we've we've accommodated for it, and I think we've done a pretty creative layout for it to make it work really well. It'll be signed appropriately, so when you when you approach, you'll know which lane to be in. For Restaurant B, you'd be in the outside lane. Restaurant A, you'd be on the inside lane. And you just drive through the lanes. There is a stop here unfortunately, because we do have some pedestrians that may need to come through here to go to the garbage dumpster here. So there'll be a stop control here, but at this point, this vehicle stopped picking their food, this person stopped, they can move on around into the into the lane while this one drives around outside, so.
Yeah, I I'm not saying it won't work. I'm just saying I've never seen this before.
Okay.
Was any thought given to shared access or any connectivity connectivity to the other to the McDonald's?
I don't believe we ever talked about sharing connection to McDonald's.
The the whole thing is you've taken the traffic off Route Five. You have signalized, you know, entrances or entrance and multiple entrances into this this town center. And this is the only area that I know that's zoned regional shopping. So this is, you know, the idea is you take it off your roads and you bring it internally. And so sharing amongst these, I think creates more crisscross traffic patterns and confusion than, you know, going in and out of the Ring Road. You'll see, I think that, like you said, Andy, that this, the drive-through is is a something that every restaurant that that wants to open is going to have. And the ones that don't have drive-throughs or don't have ability to have a drive-through are gonna close or change what they can do going forward. So this is something that I think you'll see, but I think the point here is you're you're you know, you're not gonna stack out onto the county road or a town road or a state road. You're going to keep that internal and like Andy said, we've we've never had a parking problem in in the center. I mean, even at Christmas time, there's enough parking. I mean, KeyBank never has people parking there and you know, it's a very sort of underused parking lot. So I think that the the difficulty, I think, is what you're describing is is that we've never seen this before and and does this make sense and how does it work? And like I said, we've spent a lot of time on it with the tenants and and trying to meet their concerns, but also trying to make it so that it flows well and that, you know, if you're coming in as a customer that you can see, you know, I come in here and I don't what we didn't want to do is have people come in and get stuck in the parking lot, not, you know, having one we want them to be able to come in and and sit there in the parking lot and be able to get into the drive-through and go pick up their food. So we tried not to limit the access too much. And that was what the the tenants or the, you know, the restaurants were sort of pushing back on when we when we worked with them.
But there's a problem with somebody's car, some or somebody has an emergency, what do you do? Yeah, somebody coming into one of these restaurants, say they, something happens to their car, they get a flat tire or something or.
You mean in the drive-through?
Right through the drive-through, yeah.
Yeah, there is an escape lane in the back, so there's the stacking lane. And then between the the truck loading lane, there's an escape lane.
Okay.
So short of being in that that area to the left there where where you are in one lane, there is a provision made so that people can get around and say, I don't wanna wait anymore. Yeah.
I'm I'm kind of embarrassed to ask this question. The years that I've spent with the town, are any of these internal roads controlled by the town?
They're not.
No.
They're all private. We take care of them, we maintain them, you know, we we do have police presence in the in the center. We have our own security that we pay for. And so we do, you know, we do have our own stops and our slowdowns and our bumps and speed bumps and things, so. It is not, you know, it is not enforced by the police.
I was just curious. I didn't know if the town needed.
Yeah, no, it's a good question. I mean, it's a lot of roadway and it is an internal, you know, it is a like I said, it's the idea is to get the traffic, you know, if you I guess the way I look at this is if 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 restaurant wants to come to your, you know, the town or the village or whatever, you know, putting another restaurant on a street, they need their own curb cut, they need their own entrance, they need their they need in and out and you're you're creating that new curb cut, like you all worry about all the time and, you know. And this, you don't do that. And that's why, you know, if you're having restaurants and you're you're going to have commercial development, you know, this is where you put it from a zoning perspective and a planning perspective. And yes, you want it to work the best it can, but and make it as smooth as possible for, and that's what everybody wants. But I think this is a benefit of having a town center as opposed to driving down, you know, and curb cut, curb cut, curb cut, curb cut along your along your state and county road.
And I won't argue with that, Kate. You're absolutely right. You can get out and there's three lights that control the exits, whether you go north on Burdick South or out past McDonald's, they're, you know.
Yeah. Yeah, and and I do think people, you know, maybe the first time you come in our center, it's hard for you or you know, which exit do I use and what you start to learn, like, I don't wanna use that exit, it's hard for me to get out at this time of day. I go to the light. You know, or I'm gonna do the right out, you know, the because I know there's nobody here right now. So people do get used to, you know, what makes sense. Should we proceed?
Yes, certainly, yes.
So as we stated about the parking, there's forty-eight parking spaces, which is six above town code. We do have pedestrian accessibility. We provided, there's an existing sidewalk along the Ring Road here. So we've brought in a new sidewalk with a crossing here where there's a stop sign that can get you to the front doors of both restaurants. And then also for any of the employees that need to get rid of the trash, they can come out this back door and they'll have a sidewalk that'll get them safely to the to the dumpster. So we do have really good pedestrian access. The site, as much of the site is, is in the flood plain. So we do have to fill this area up a couple of feet to get it above the flood plain. So we will be proposing this finished floor elevation at four thirty-eight, which is the same floor elevation we used for the Chase Bank. So we'll we will comply with town.
That'll look a little strange, won't it? It'd be it'd be higher than the bank, higher than.
Slightly higher, but not, it'll be it'll be hard to see the difference. The banks were at or about a foot above flood. This building will be two feet above flood because the code changed, but I don't I don't think it'd be that noticeable.
The bank is very noticeable.
It's noticeable, but I mean, the elevation change between the two buildings won't be that noticeable. At least I don't think, my opinion. Stormwater mitigation, we will be designing to meet the DC design guidelines for redevelopment of the property. And we will file for coverage under the general permits, because we are disturbing more than an acre of land. The proposed project will not create additional impervious area, so we're keeping the exact impervious area. To be able to comply with that, we're actually gonna do a little bit of porous pavement. So these eleven parking spaces will actually be porous pavement. So the rainwater will drain towards those and drain right through the asphalt and infiltrate into the soil. We did some soil infiltration tests there. They came back very favorable while draining soils. So we're able to comply with the New York State DC guidelines. And we do need to provide as part of the code. We need to treat the pavement area, so we are providing a hydrodynamic separator, which is over here, which is right before we exit. All the stormwater that exits the site will go through that chamber and tie into the storm sewer where it goes today. Utilities, all the utilities we need are on site. The sanitary is a little further away than we would like it to be, but it's over by McDonald's, so we do show it, the sanitary lateral going out that way. The water cuts through the middle of the site owned by Aqua, so it'll tie into the water and the electric and gas are out upon the street. For proposed landscaping, there are a few trees that we have to remove based on grading. So we're removing two evergreen trees along on the eastern edge and four ornamental trees, so we're gonna replace those with new trees. We've also provided three new trees along Burdick Street or Genesee Street with some landscape shrubs as well to kind of help that view from the south. We have landscaped islands inside the parking lot, all the islands are landscaped. And we are providing evergreen shrubs up against the fence for the dumpster to help screen that too. In terms of lighting, the proposed lighting will be twenty-five foot mounted height, will be LED lights, will be dark sky compliant and will match the lighting that we just did. Well, all the lighting on site will all be the same, so it'll match the existing lighting that's there today.
Are both restaurants owned by the same corporation?
That's kind of the site plan. We can go on to traffic if you don't have any other questions.
Yeah, this Mike Lee right again. I I do have questions about traffic, because like I said, I live here and I navigate this almost every day. If if there, these two restaurants are not the same type of restaurant, then what type of traffic pattern are are we expecting to come through here? I mean, do you know how many cars? What what is the expected? You've you've mentioned occupancy. What are the hours of operation?
We wanna have Amy Dake, our traffic consultant of SRF. You wanna take the wheel, Amy?
Sure, yeah, I can I can kind of go over our traffic impact study and then if you have additional questions, I'd be happy to answer them. My name is Amy Dake. I'm senior traffic engineer with SRF Associates. We prepared a comprehensive traffic study for these two uses, restaurant uses. In light of everything that's been happening with COVID, it's more desirable these days to use historical information if we have it. In this case, we prepared the traffic impact study for the Chase Bank. So we went ahead and we took the full development conditions for the Chase Bank and used that as a starting point for this traffic study. And then because we did, we do have an idea of what types of restaurants these are, we went and counted actual similar restaurants, one in the Syracuse area, one in the Rochester area, so that we could model actual traffic volumes for these two restaurant uses. The Restaurant A is gonna, we expect it would generate approximately forty-two entering, forty exiting in the evening peak hour. Restaurant B, we expect approximately thirty entering and forty-seven exiting. And then in the Saturday midday lunchtime peak hour for Restaurant A, we would expect about fifty entering, forty-three exiting trips and Restaurant B about a hundred and six and ninety-six. And we did also take a look at the stacking in their drive-through pickup window type uses as well. As Kate and Andy have both mentioned, there are several access points for this for the center. So we did study the four driveways on Burdick Street as well as the right-in, right-out driveway on Genesee, the signalized driveway on Genesee and the existing signalized intersection at Burdick and Genesee. We did.
Can I ask? Those traffic counts, those were evening traffic counts?
We, yeah, so we looked at for restaurant-type uses like this, we find that the PM commuter peak period on the weekday and the Saturday in the middle of the day, kind of a lunchtime peak period is the the most the biggest time period to look at, sorry. Yeah, so it's a weekday PM peak.
Okay, so it wasn't evening, it was lunchtime?
Well, one is an evening peak, so like the commute home, like a five o'clock time period. And the other one is Saturday lunchtime.
So they studied two peak periods. You study a
Right.
Evening peak period. You try and take the the period that's got the most traffic. That's what you're studying. Not that, not, you don't want the ones that are ten o'clock in the morning, you know, you wanna get your peak period.
Right, and what we're trying to look at is the is a combination, that's the worst-case scenario. So it's a combination of the traffic on the roadways and the traffic that's generated by the restaurants.
Okay. Okay.
So what she's saying is like commuter traffic, you know, if you live in this area, I work here, so I know. So what she's saying is like commuter traffic, you know, if you live in this area, I work here. So I know that you're, you're getting a lot of traffic at, from commuters, um, in the, you know, four thirty to six thirty, I guess, four thirty, five thirty, probably the worst.
Right.
And so whatever has the most traffic is the hour that she's going to, like, it's basically taking worst case scenario and analyzing that because everything else would be less. And then Saturday, you have another one that's a different time, obviously, because everyone does their errands and shops and so they pick that period and study that one as well.
Okay. So getting back to what Mike asked a little while ago, these would not be breakfast restaurants then. They are something other than that.
Um, one, one of the restaurants may serve breakfast. Uh, the other one most likely would not. But the time periods that have the worst combination of traffic between the roadway and what the restaurant generates are the evening peak hour and the Saturday lunchtime peak hour.
Okay. And, and this may be a question for Andy, and I apologize for skipping around. Um, a- and I've been in drive-through lanes before where somebody in front of me has a big order and they tell them to pull ahead. And I see where restaurant B has a little slot where somebody can pull ahead and park and wait. Yep, right there. I don't see that for restaurant A.
It's a mobile pickup, so the order is ready. So they can line.
I, I, you're breaking up, Andy.
Oh, I'm sorry. You're hearing that?
No.
We're here.
That's, I can address that, Andy. Restaurant A is a, a mobile pickup window. It's not a drive, a traditional drive-through. So there's no place to pull up and place an order and then pull up to the window. What you're going to do is you're either going to order ahead of time before you even come to the site. Or you may pull into the parking lot and park, place your order from your phone in your car. And then when your order is ready, you drive up to the window and pick up your food.
Okay. All right. All right. I was just.
And I believe the way it works is that you don't even pay for it at the window. I think you have to pay for it ahead of time.
That brings me to a question. What happens if I get in the wrong lane?
You gotta drive around the building.
Yeah, I mean, the, the lanes will be signed so that you can clearly see which lane to go in for which choice of restaurant, but that's correct. You drive around the building.
And, and you do have a little bit of time before the curb happens there. So, uh, you could switch lanes and you know, three cars. But yeah, you probably only do that once.
Get a few hornbeeps too.
Couple other important points to note with the traffic, um, with restaurant type uses, we do typically have what we call pass-by traffic. So restaurants have as much as half of their traffic come from the existing traffic stream on Genesee Street or Burdick Street. So if I'm driving home from work and I want to stop and pick up food, I'm considered a pass-by trip because I would be on Genesee Street anyway. And then we may also get some interaction within the plaza as well. So maybe I go stop and stop. And even though I just went grocery shopping, I don't feel like cooking, I stop and grab dinner. I'm moving home.
Amy, regarding traffic, this is Joe Lupia. Uh, I just wanted you to know that we had received correspondence from the Fayette Manor Homeowners Association President. Uh, and he is looking to have a traffic study relative to the entrance at Fayette Manor. Uh, at some point you may be required to respond to his questions about that. I'm imagining you're not, you're not going to do a traffic study over there, but I wanted you to know they're looking for one.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else?
When do you expect these, these buildings to be built?
Uh, we would like to build them this year.
Charlie, without giving anything away, um, could you give us an idea of what restaurants exist today that are similar to A and B?
Oh, you little sneak.
Oh, just, it's, it's hard to talk about A and B when.
I mean, these aren't restaurants that are new to our area. I'll tell you that. These aren't things you haven't seen. They're, they're in the area. They're, I, I don't personally think these will offend anyone in any way. They're not, they're not. They're not a McDonald's or a Chick-fil-A or anything like that. They're very nice. People like these restaurants. I think you'll be very pleased. As soon as I can tell you what they are, I will. Um, it's, it's just, um, the tenants have a process and they won't let us reveal that because I don't really know why, but they, they get very testy about that. So, um, you know, I don't think there's things that will be at least unnerving or, or bothersome. I mean, more than, um, you know, a restaurant that's already in our center would be.
Okay.
The question, this is Valerie Beecher. I'm wondering, can you tell us like, are they chain restaurants or are they small business local restaurants?
They're chains.
Okay.
Is this like a Chipotle?
More chain.
It could be similar to a Chipotle.
I mean, when you said Mexican, I'm, I, I lived here for a very long time. I'm trying to picture what Mexican type restaurant might be around here.
Yeah. I'm really sorry. I know it's, it's, it helps with, uh, with putting this in context. I realize that and you know, I, I just, if I could tell you, I would, um.
These final choices?
I'm sorry.
What's that? Are they final choices of tenants?
Um, yes, there's not, I mean, this has been a lot of planning. There's just, there's not, you know, mix and match here. These are the tenants. Yeah.
Hey, I've got three questions for you. Joe Lupia here. You have a, uh, display here on our screen relative to, uh, facade. Is, is that the facade that we're going to be seeing?
Yes. So I can touch on that. Sorry. She's our architectural core. Uh, so the, the building design, uh, the envelope really is trying to, um, work with the existing, um, this existing palette we have, uh, in the center. So predominantly brick, um, compared to what we've got elsewhere. Uh, we did introduce a second darker tone just to add a little bit of, um, detail to it. There is a little bit of the green roof element over the center entry, which is the larger restaurant's main entry. Um, the smaller restaurant enters on the side or, or the, you know, yes, thank you right there. Uh, the side that faces the drive-through and the street is on the bottom. Uh, so we've taken two panels in the projected ends and kind of recessed them a little bit to add a little bit of interest to it. But we also recognize there's menu boards and then in front of that, between that part of the building and the street, there's, there's also low level landscaping. So it is a bit of a layered effect. Um, the entrances, uh, have a horizontal, um, metal projection that comes out to, um, uh, canopy that comes out over the door. That'll have some downlighting within it so that you can illuminate your entrance. And there's also a couple of wall sconces on either side of the three main projections, um, on the front. But the idea is that this would look like other buildings that you see in our center, right? So we did not go with the, these two particular restaurants prototypical look. We really, um, pulled from what was in the adjacent center buildings.
So this Mike Lee Roy again, does Core own these restaurants or do the franchises own them?
No, Core doesn't own them. We lease, we lease them.
You're leasing?
Yes, yes. We don't own any, um, just so, you know, for the fun of it, we don't own any restaurants. Um, what?
We own the building.
We own the building. We own the building. But, but they lease, they lease the space, just like, um, you know, all the other restaurants in our center.
Right.
Target does own its own building, just so everybody knows. Target and Stickly, they own their own buildings there, but the rest Core owns.
Kate, do you have a timetable for the, uh, the SWIP and for the written traffic, uh, report?
I, I thought we submitted a traffic report, so I'm, I'm slightly confused if, if you don't have it. Um, did submit the traffic report.
Okay, I, I may have just not.
Yeah, there, there is a traffic report and I've been working with Andy on a SWIP. He assured me that's forthcoming shortly.
Yeah, I, yeah, this is what I know what you were behind on.
Valerie noted there were some changes to the site plan. Um, the package that was submitted to the group looks like it was dated early to mid-March. And, uh, my discussions with Andy were that there were some changes. I think that's what was reflected here. So we would probably need an updated set of plans, you know, with the, with the new layout and, uh, so the board could see and also, uh, work with Andy on the SWIP and whatnot.
So we are happy to submit an updated set of plans. I assume you need, um, twelve sets again? I think that was the requirement, right?
Yes.
Yes, please.
Okay.
I, I, this is, this is Rich again. I would like to know that the fire department has reviewed this and does not have an issue with the, the backside of that building getting around. And they may very well, they may say we can get to it from Route Five, so we don't need to get on the property itself. I don't know, but I'd like to get their input.
Yeah, we're happy to do that. And is there a fire department that is, um, responsible for this? Is that we should, is it Fayetteville we should be seeking?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So Kate, the question to you, Kate, is, uh, is there anything you wanted us to do? I, I think we need to get the updated plans in.
Yeah, we would like to, um, get the updated plans in. We'd like to get referred to the county if that's possible with the new plans. Cause I know they're, I know that you have to wait for them. Um, and I think their meeting is the, well, I don't know when the meeting is, but the referral date's the 12th, I think. I believe so. So we've got a little time, but can you refer it based on the new plans coming in?
We can refer it when they arrive, yes.
Okay. Okay. I didn't know if you guys did a board referral or is it, it would, was administrative that it went, um, so. Um, and then, um, the next thing is I know you have to have a public hearing. Would you be willing to set that date for the public hearing?
I'm, I'm a little reluctant to do it without seeing the updated plans.
Right.
Jamie, am I off key on that?
I agree. I think also, um, we probably want to have a little internal work session on this as well. Um, and, and take a look to see if there's any other recommendations. Have our engineer, um, review everything.
When you say, is it an internal work session with the applicant or is that just the board?
It would just be some board members.
Okay, okay. Cause work session means different things and different.
Yeah, unless, unless they, they decide they want, want you to come in. Just let our engineer talk to, talk to us.
I, this is Valerie. I have a question that's sort of related to this, but just also because again, I'm, I'm, I apologize that I was new, I'm new and I wasn't part of the original um, center, um, development. Is there other property within this town center that still could be developed as far as additional commercial restaurants, banks, et cetera, or is it it?
Um, it's, you know, I, I, I don't want to say there's nothing there. I mean, could you have something expand a little bit maybe, but, um, you know, I don't really think there's any other parcels or of land that, that you would be able to, I mean, build anything. Um, like I said, I, I don't think there's anything else. If you look at the center, there's really not anywhere else to build. Um, you know, again, Stickly owns its own parcel, the YMCA owns its own parcel and Target does, but, um, I don't really see any other area that you could build on unless you were like to close entrances or something, you know?
Yeah. Okay. I'm just trying to get an idea of like, you know, overall congestion.
Yeah, no, I think you're, you're at, you're, you know, I hate to say things like this because what, what, like, I'm not going to know that somebody wants to add on and KeyBank is a different use someday and they need a, an expansion for that use, you know, I, I, but I, as, as far as a new parcel or a new building, I don't see that you could fit that there.
Okay, thank you. And my other question was, I, I, I'm only saying this because you mentioned it in the very beginning about it not being a Chick-fil-A. And I think that, you know, the talk going around town is the fact that a Chick-fil-A would cause an immense amount of traffic and demand. Um, especially because there aren't very many in the area. So I know you can't mention the names of the restaurants and I'm not asking you. I just wonder if these particular restaurants could create that sort of demand, um, as far as popularity demand that would create traffic from all other towns within the Syracuse area trying to come to this location.
No, they would not. There, there is no need for them to come from other areas of town to go to these restaurants.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate it.
Hey Kate, if I could ask you one question, this is Rich again.
Yep.
We had talked a while ago about, about putting a deed restriction on the gazebo end of Route Five and North Burdick Street. Was that put in place so it can never be built on?
I think it was, um, put on as part of the subdivision.
I remember, I remember it was discussed. I'm just wondering if it was actually.
Yeah, it was recorded that way by this, when we did the subdivision.
Okay.
Was, yep.
Okay, good. Thank you.
You guys, the, the planning board really did their, did their job.
That's good to hear.
Yeah.
All right.
I did have one clarification. Can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
I did have one clarification. A revised set of plans were submitted on the eighth before Lisa went on vacation. So.
No, we, we pulled the, the first one. They never saw they.
They never saw the person. So you actually, so you actually have the correct plans. The only change
Right.
that we made was making this western driveway two-way. I mean, it's very, all we did was we got rid of the arrow.
So the dumpsters are moved from what we, at least from what we have.
Uh, no, those are in the same location.
Yeah, I don't know what I'm looking, I have a some of the materials that I printed out that I'm looking at.
They should all be dated four, nine, twenty, twenty-one, unless I sent the wrong ones.
Yep.
This is, yeah, the one I have is four, one, twenty-one.
The set that got pulled.
Carly, Carly blew it. Oops. Did you really? No, because I took, I physically took the plans back.
Well, we, we submitted them electronically too. So if they were distributed to the board electronically.
Oh, but we submitted the, the new ones. Well, my apologies.
So for county referral, you, you guys have, and the county has pretty much the most updated drawing.
They do. I don't understand what happened. I, I don't understand either because we pulled all of those.
It could also be up on our document center, which needs to then be updated too.
We'll, we'll get that corrected then. Yeah, it's, they should all be forward. Yeah, we, we had them in for a couple of hours one day and pulled them, um. And your hard copy should definitely be the correct ones because I actually took the old ones back.
Yeah, my, my plans are in fact dated four, nine, but it does show two one-way entrances, if I can call it that, on the western entrance. It's not.
Correct. That's, that was the primary change is we made that, um, in and out as opposed to just an in. Yes. That, that is the change.
Okay, folks, we need to move on now.
Yeah, yep.
Kate, uh, your engineer's going to talk to Doug and, uh, to work on SWIP and then we'll put it back on again, okay?
All right. So you, can we come back to the next meeting so we can set a date if we have everything in? Would that work?
You can do that.
Okay. I will be back. We will be back on the, I don't know the right date now. What's the next meeting?
Is our next meeting.
May tenth, right. That would be great if we could, if we could do that.
All right, Kate, Kate, we'll, uh, we're adjourned. All right, Kate, Kate, we'll, uh, we'll adjourn it until May the tenth.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Appreciate all your time and your thoughts on this.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks, bye-bye.
Folks, we're down to the last item on the agenda, and this is an application by Alexander Hebert. With respect to a two-lot subdivision, this is an initial presentation relative to Shep's Corners Road. And North Manlius Road, text map number forty-two dash twenty-one point one. Due to a potential conflict of interest, I am going to withdraw from this. And I am, uh, asking Fed Gilbert to take over as acting chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, Mr. Hebert, I see that you're still here. Congratulations on sticking with us as long. Tell us what you're up to.
So I, I, the, uh, the twelve maps that have been submitted, um, for your guys' review. Um, I don't really, it's, it's just changing or just subdividing the, the forty. Somewhat acres, forty-nine, I think acres that were there, um, subdividing a parcel off of there. That's gonna be about three point two four plus or minus acres on the, um. Shep's Corners Road side of that, um, for potentially, uh, a future house to be built.
Okay. Well, it's pretty simple. Uh, anybody have questions to Mr. Hebert?
I have a question for Doug and I, I really don't know the answer to this. The, the size of the lots, the road frontage, all that complies with our code. But there's a, a pretty sizable wetlands in the middle of, I don't know if this, I guess it's Lot One. Does that, does that impact this at all, Doug? The fact that you can't get across that wetlands?
Uh, it shouldn't unless there's an issue with a road cut. And the one thing I wanted to point out to Alex, if you go on and look at OnGo. The, uh, the northeast corner of your property. The surveyor, you know, kinda, kinda showed some wetlands here and then he made a note down in the bottom that says, um. Uh, properties located in wet, regulated wetlands is delineated on maps on file with the town of Manlius Clerk. Um, we, we don't actually have those maps, but the thing you should be aware of. Is that there are also federal wetlands up on that corner. So that whole, that whole corner up there is gonna be extremely difficult to build on, just so you know that. I think there's enough spots down below that you can build, but that's probably gonna, um, not allow you to get a road cut up on that. Northeast end either, cause there'd be no way to get back down into the inside. So as long as you can get the road cuts on Shep's Corners. And you know that's going on up there.
Yep.
That's, that's fine. That's, that's the only comment I had. I just wanted to point that out to you in all fairness that you.
Okay. Yep.
That's one of the things that I wanted to mention in, in this neighborhood, you can save yourself a lot of future headaches by having. The wetlands delineated actually on the ground, flagged on the ground, using the criteria that the Core Engineers will accept.
Yeah, I looked, I called DC back in February, March and they said they were, they were doing. I think they said that it wouldn't be until the end of this year to possibly get out there, um, but they said being far enough away from wetlands, this shouldn't be affected.
I don't think Lot Two A is, it's up and out of, out of the wet area, it looks like.
Yeah, that's what I saw, Fred. Yep.
Yeah.
But Two A is gonna be fine. It's just what you wanna do in the future, Alex.
Okay.
I can see you're aware of that.
No, okay, thank you.
Well, I guess what, we, we could probably, I'm sorry, go ahead, Jamie.
Yeah, so there's, I'm sorry, it's kinda hard, cause I'm, I'm going back and forth on my screen, cause I'm looking at what's on my screen. So, the, the subdivision, uh, title block says Hebert and Zion subdivision. So who, who, yeah, can you explain who owns the properties?
Christine is my mother.
Okay.
Jason is my cousin, next-door neighbor, and Paul is my grandfather.
And. Right now, there's a subdivision that exists, correct?
Off of this lot? Is that?
Well, yes, I'm just trying to, trying to understand, um, it's, right now it says, there's lands of Jason P. and Lindsay Zion. And it's got a book and a page and it's got a map reference and then it's got Lot Three map reference. Then, okay, can you explain that?
In fifteen, I think it was, so the, the whole parcel at one point, um, was my grandfather's and my great aunt. And I think it's two thousand and fifteen-ish, we subdivided, Jason, uh, got a piece of property to build on and I got a piece of property. So that's Lot Two and Lot Three on the, the big app if you're looking at.
Yes.
So now, five years later, um, my father-in-law's looking to possibly build a house on Lot One, or, sorry, Two A. Which is what the subdivision's for this time.
And who owns it?
My. And grand, well, my mother and Jason are the owners of the lot and my grandfather has life use.
Of Lot Two A?
Of Lot One A, the, the whole parcel.
So I think what he's showing us, Jamie, is a two-lot subdivision.
So Lot One A and then Two A is coming off of it.
Yes.
And the other is, the others are just there for reference. So the owners that are on there. Christine, Paul Zion and Jason are the owners.
Yes.
And, and including life use for.
Well, yeah, my grandfather and Jason are, I'm sorry, my mother Christine and Jason are the two owners of the property. My grandfather is life use of the property, so, so Paul would have life use of the property.
Okay, and that's why he's on here.
If, I don't know how that works, but I, they, they did it over with my mother years ago with him having life use.
Okay.
If that answers.
Uh, yes, it does. Thank you.
Is, is there anything beyond just a little bit of confusion of showing the lots that are not a part of this two-lot subdivision?
That's all I think. I think they've delineated, Fred, if you look at the plan, the dark borders are the two-lot subdivision. The other ones are just blocks shown on a, on the surveyor subdivision map.
Yeah, for reference, yes, correct.
Okay, thank, thank you.
Well, I don't, um, I don't see anything, any, any sticky issues with this. So I suppose we can, we can go ahead and set a, uh, we can have a public hearing, uh, next time, next time we have a meeting. Which will be the first meeting in May.
What's the next meeting?
I'm sorry.
Is it May tenth?
Yes, it is.
So I'll make a motion to set a public hearing up for the subdivision for May tenth.
And Ann Kelly seconded it. She made.
Or I'll second her motion.
Okay, Ann Kelly's made, made the motion, Rich Prosetti's seconded the motion. If there's no further discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed. So on May the tenth, Alex, we'll, uh, we have, we, we're required to have a public hearing and. I wouldn't anticipate that it's not gonna be a big issue, but, uh, we'll have it at, at, uh, first thing.
Yeah, six thirty-five, yep.
Six thirty-five.
Six thirty-five.
He deserves first on the.
Okay.
Thank you very much for your guys' time.
Regular chairman, come back.
And that concludes most of what we have. I did wanna just say that it's my understanding that council. Uh, has been drawing a resolution relative to, uh, the woodland development, Hoagland. And, um, I'm anticipating that that will be ready for the next meeting.
It is going to be ready in advance of the next meeting. It has been worked on, um, not just by myself, but, uh, other. Board members and Doug with input, so it's continuing to evolve.
Thank you.
So folks, we will be having a Hoagland on the agenda, and this is probably for the final EIS. And, uh, a resolution relative to, uh, the site plan as well. Okay?
All right.
Fred?
Your sleeping bags, it might be a long meeting.
I'll, I'll second Fred's motion.
I'm in favor.
It was telepathy, for sure.
We have a motion to adjourn that's been seconded, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. We stand adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Good night, everyone. Bye-bye.